I think we can go ahead and get started. Senator Egan is going to go ahead and kick us off tonight.
Great, thanks, Sam. On behalf of the Juneau delegation, Sam Kido, Justin Parrish, and myself, we represent, right now, the region. We represent Juneau, Haynes, Skagway, Gustavus, the Watchman at Excursion Inlet, Kluck One, and just a great bunch of people. I was born and raised here. Justin and Sam have lived here for a long, long time. And whether you agree or disagree with us, I just want to let you know that we're trying our darndest to do what we think is right for our community and to keep the capital here in Juneau. Sam?
Thank you, Dennis. So, we are here, in part, I guess, because we do like to reach out and hear from people in the district periodically, but we also have another situation in that the governor has called us in for a special session. Started out as a special session for revenue, and very quickly, Governor added the job for us to address Senate Bill 54, which are some interim transition components that are anticipated to make SB 91 work better for criminal justice reform. So, we have a special session that is dealing with two subjects that are both very important and have the potential to be controversial and elicit a lot of discussion. And I am hoping that we are able to have some of that discussion here, but we're also available to answer any other questions you might have about what's going on in northern southeast. So, the two issues really, the Governor has put a, what is a head tax on to the special session. That head tax basically is one and a half percent with a small amount that everybody pays, but then it is capped at $147,000, at a revenue level of $2,200, which eliminates the dividend. So, anybody earning more than $147,000 would not pay any more in taxes, but anybody earning less than $25,000 will still pay, I think it's a flat $100 or something like that. So, I do think that we do need to look at revenue. I think whatever we do looking at revenue has to be as fair as possible for all of Alaskans. Do have concerns about putting too much burden on people that have lower income, and that, in my opinion, actually will also serve to stifle the economy, in my opinion, actually in this circumstance, more than having an income tax that is more progressive. And so, that's my position on that issue. Senate Bill 54, I do believe that these are things that recommended by the Criminal Justice Commission should be relatively easy to pass, but there is discussion that is boiling up in Matt Sou and in Anchorage about how Senate Bill 91 is to blame for all of the crime in Alaska. And there is, there are some components of Senate Bill 91 that could have been done better, but we are in a situation where we've got almost a perfect storm. We've had budget cuts for the last three years. Our court system is operating on, basically, four and a half days, so they're closed on Fridays, which means we don't have full access to the courts. We have limited amounts of money decreasing budgets going to state prosecutors. State prosecutors are telling local prosecutors, "We can't prosecute misdemeanors anymore. We don't have the revenue." So, all those misdemeanor cases are going to the local governments, in our case, the city of Juneau, and they don't have more money to hire more prosecutors of their own, so they are overloading their system as well. So, we're in a situation where all of that is taking place. At the same time, we have a flattening economy. Our community, actually, is doing fairly well, four and a half percent unemployment rate. We're holding pretty steady for what we have in the past, but other parts of the state aren't doing so well, and so the average unemployment rate for the state of Alaska is 7%. So, we're in a situation where unemployment rates are growing in many parts of the state. Because of that, we're also seeing a burgeoning of some of the drug use and abuse issues, so alcohol, drugs. When people get addicted to heroin, to opioids, then if they don't have jobs, they have to have money to try and feed that habit, and those habits can be very expensive, which leads to the property crime that we've seen, in my opinion. A large part of it is due to drug use and abuse. And so, we've got a lot of situations we're having to address. It's unfortunate that we have to do this in our fourth special session this year, but we do have to do what we're trying to do, which is address revenue picture, get Senate Bill 54 passed, and then move into legislative session with a lot of other things that are going to be on our plate, including trying to get a budget. So, that's kind of the overall background of the circumstance, and I'll turn it over to Justin to fill in a little bit more.
Thanks, Sam. Thank you all for sharing a beautiful sunny day with us. That's remarkable. I'm very glad to see so many people here. I really look forward to hearing your questions, to hearing your concerns, and if any of you have any really brilliant ideas that I can steal and pass off as my own, I will do that thing. As Sam and Dennis said, you know, we are in pretty challenged circumstances right here. I feel like I was suddenly made crew on a vessel that was on fire and also sinking. Now, we've got to take away the torches and hatchets from half of the people onboard and start our repairs, start moving it back into more peaceful waters. There's a heck of a lot of work to be done. I'm grateful for the opportunity to finish Senate Bill 54, which will close a couple of loopholes. I've got some documents summarizing the changes in the back, if any of you are curious. I'm still concerned about the overall state and the state of our local economy, the state of crime in Juneau. I'm worried about the jobs in Juneau going into the future. I think we need to make more sensible investments in our retirement system. We should have a defined benefits option for people entering the program. In our Alaska Marine Highway, which is, has been needlessly threatened, and in the overall economy and the safety of our community. I'll be happy to speak at length with any of you at most any time. I've got my business cards in the back, and on my person, my staff are here, Rob Edwardson and Lisa Worrell, and I really would be happy to sit down with any one of you for coffee, tea, or just to talk. Thank you.
So, do we have anybody who would like to start off with a question?
Come forward and use the mic. Okay. And I'm not sure that my concern is, it's not questions, yeah, it's a question, but it's not on the subjects that you guys are planning to talk about. So, forgive me for the deviation, but so many people were killed and wounded in the massacre in Las Vegas, which was made as deadly as it was by this little accessory that the shooter, Steve Paddock, was able to install on the back of a dozen of his semi-automatic weapons, turning them into the equivalent of full-auto, which shoots nine rounds a second. You don't even aim at somebody, you just spray a crap, and you know, you need a high-capacity magazine, which he had, and a bump stock, and an AR-15, which he had. The AR-15 is legal, the bump stock is legal, and I don't know where he got the high-capacity mags, like 100 rounds. Those bump stocks can be bought in the pages of that magazine right there, or I can Google it online and Google bump stocks for sale and buy one for about $100 and have it, I believe, mailed to me. Now, the federal regulators, maybe they home in on me because I bought one, I don't really know. Then I turn around and offer it for sale on Craigslist, I just want to create mayhem, and it sort of disappears. My point is, my appeal is, my question is, you guys all know this, if nothing else, I sent you articles about it, and are you going to do anything about it? Are you gonna, can you, can you, you know, a bump stock can't possibly be constitutionally protected as a weapon. Get rid of them. Who needs it?
So, a question and a comment, I guess, kind of combined, but a concern about a revelation that we've heard based on what happened with that devastating situation in Las Vegas. I was, I guess, extremely disheartened to hear about how much planning this individual put into that effort, but one of those things that came out of that was his use of bump stocks in order to make his semi-automatic weapons operate almost more automatically. We have heard that Congress is considering a ban on bump stocks. We've heard that the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms has authorized that item as, basically, it's a piece of plastic, it is an accessory, it has no weapon value until you attach it to the weapon, and then it has significantly negative value. We've heard that some manufacturers and some sellers are actually not selling at this time, awaiting the action of the federal government. I do hope that it's something that's addressed at the federal level. I do not know if it's something that we can or would be able to address at the state level, but I do think it's important for us to have a discussion. So, one of, I guess, from my personal perspective, my personal opinion, and I guess, this is an open town hall, it's not about any specific subject, so that's perfectly fine that we're talking about this issue, perfectly fine that we talk about many other issues. But I do think that we have a situation now with weapons in our country that even if we had a ban on assault weapons, or we had a ban on weapons that could be easily militarized, we would have a circumstance where there are so many weapons and so much ammunition out on the streets right now that we would be chasing our tail forever to try and catch up with it. So, I don't think that going back to an assault weapons ban is actually going to solve the problem. I'm not sure what could, but I'm hopeful that we can find something that can address that issue in the future. Yes? Buy that program, definitely would be something that might be worth considering. I do think that, based on what happened in Las Vegas, we do have an opportunity to have some hearings at the legislature and just start a robust discussion, because I do think that's what it's going to take. Anybody else?
Can I comment on that? Any politician who tries to pursue gun control in Alaska, he's going to have a short career.
Yeah, I guess, I don't know if everybody heard that, but I don't know that anybody would disagree that if we tried to get into gun control in Alaska, it could be challenging. I think there's got to be someplace between banning weapons and full access to weapons that we can all agree to try and make our state much safer.
Unless you wanted to say something first, Dennis?
Listen, and I apologize, if you want me to stand up, I will, but I'm 70. So, soon to be 71, so I decided to sit if it's okay with you. Before I answer, I want to recognize Peter Narrows of my staff and Jesse Keel of my staff. He and Justin are the only ones in the building with ties. So, they're easily recognizable. Well, I take that back, there's one more tie out there.
Larry.
I can't see who, yeah, it is, it's Larry. You know, I'm a big supporter of the Second Amendment, but the problem is, you can take the Second Amendment too far. I own an auto five, Browning Auto Five 12-gauge. I own a .30/30. I own a .22 pistol. I own a .22 rifle. I used to use those for shooting halibut. But the thing with me is, all my weapons are registered. They weren't bought at some, you know, five-and-dime gun shop. They were bought legally and registered with the federal government. And I don't take my firearms to Las Vegas when we go to country shows or rock and roll shows or things like that. It just, it just makes me sick of what happened. Okay, oh my God, it's a fire alarm. Anyway, I just, you know, both sides can carry this too far. I don't like, right now, a discussion that's going on on social media on either side. I think it's getting way out of hand, and, you know, we have to pull back and tackle this in an intelligent light.
Thank you. I'm going to stand, I'm not 70. About halfway. I hope so. He just said I'd get there, and we'll see. We dare hope, or I dare hope. So, on the question of gun safety, I think that there are a few unifying themes where we could actually see meaningful action in our community and in our state. There's a broad consensus that the people who own firearms should be responsible gun owners, and there's an awful lot that we can do to get there. We can have education for, in middle schools, I know that Jesse Keel has been volunteering for years with hunter safety education. We need, we need that. That's extremely valuable, that keeps people safe. It would be really good if we could follow it up in high school, when people are getting more excited, when they're getting more liberty and autonomy. We should be following up with them to make sure that they're keeping their weapons pointed in a safe direction, unloaded, safeties on, all the time. We need to help people who are going to use firearms to engrain those habits. As to the specific question of restricting any particular kind of firearm or accessory, one, it's not going to happen in the state of Alaska, and two, there are more valuable places for us to be putting our energy, like into support for people with mental health problems or addiction, like into early education for people who we want to be the next generation of responsible gun owners and hunters. And so, that's where I'll be putting my effort going forward. And I suppose we should ask her for her next question. Ma'am, if you can speak into the microphone, that'd, I'm sure, be appreciated by our media.
Sure. My name is Susie, and I ride the fence on this issue. One, I'm a responsible gun owner who's purchased my guns legally in a gun store, and mine are all federally registered, and I don't make any apologies for owning weapons, and I won't inventory how many I have, but I have weapons. The other part of this that really bothers me are these accoutrement that go on the weapons that make them so highly lethal and make them into pretty much combat weapons. And I'll just tell you that up until my early adulthood, when these mass crimes started happening, I never thought twice about my right to have a gun relatively unrestricted. As long as I meet some criteria and I'm willing to stand in Fred Meyer for three hours waiting for the paperwork to come through, which is what I did the last time, I walked out with a weapon. I walked out with a weapon. And they take, basically, purchaser statement on, "Do you have any drug problems? Do you have any mental health problems?" That is problematic to me in the current climate. Also, the other thing that's really problematic to me, and this will just be my final statement, my sister was sitting in the Mandalay Bay Hotel at a slot machine six hours before this man rained terror on Vegas. So, you want to put me on one side of the fence or the other, I'll hand you my weapons if it'll make it so that this doesn't happen to anybody else. And we have families in the state of Alaska who actually lost people. We have tons of people in our own town who were in Vegas when that happened, and my sister was literally floors away from this guy while he was readying his room in the same building. I'll give you my weapons if you can do anything to help protect another family from having to go through just the fear that our family went through, because we didn't know where my sister was for a few hours, and that was terrifying.
Yeah, I'll do the same thing. I support that. I'll give you any weapons I've got in advance, that kind of a difference.
Perhaps we could have a general show of hands of people who would like to align themselves with Susie's statement. Thank you, and in fairness, a show of hands of those who would be strongly opposed. So, it's a fairly even split. Now, my, first, I'm very sorry for the fear that your sister went through. My family was in Barcelona not so long ago when a van was driven into a crowd of people in one of the most deadly terror attacks in recent years. The fact is that we are living in an increasingly insecure age. We're living in a time where individual power has vastly outpaced safety, individual responsibility, the other things which a society has an obligation to provide. I believe that there are any number of ways that this mass killing could have happened. Did the semi-automatic weapons and the bump stock help? Absolutely. They facilitated a terrible murder. Could it have been done with other tools? Also, yes, absolutely. What we need to do is get to the root causes, we need to find the reasons that people move to these desperate and terrible acts, and those can range anything from radicalization in one belief system or another, to personal psychosis, to economic despair, to drug-related pressures. All of those can result in these tragic incidents, and we need to get to those causes if we really want to prevent them from unfolding with one tool or another. I've got nothing but sympathy for the people killed, I've got nothing but horror for these events when they unfold, but we've also got to have enough resolve to take the actions which can lead to reducing the death, to reducing the sorrow, the terror, which so many people live in now. And I sincerely believe that the way we can get to that is by solving some of the underlying economic, cultural, and social problems. Either of you? Okay. Joy?
Thank you for hosting this tonight. And when you said getting at the root causes of some of these problems in our society, you know, I'd like to speak up for early childhood education, that when we start out young, building that empathy in young children, building those social skills, and really supporting their emotional development, they don't turn out to be those people that are, you know, so many problems in our society, whether opioid use or violence, you know. And what I want to ask you all tonight is, every year, we've sort of been a ping-pong ball for, early childhood is kind of, all the funding's gone, then it's put back in, then it's all gone again and put back in, you know, sort of, and I know, thanks to your efforts to really hold strong, to really knowing that we have to put our money where our values are, it has to be a moral budget. And what do you think the chances are of this year of really, you know, holding strong on our education in general, pre-K through university?
Yeah, thanks, Joy. Thanks, Joy. I have five granddaughters. Four of the five granddaughters went through pre-K, all five, and they're doing well. I have a five-year-old that's reading well. We have a two-year-old now that is sort of doing pre-K, but she will really start pre-K next year. I think pre-K is one of the best avenues for childhood education. Both our daughters did pre-K here in the Juneau School System. Now, we had to pay some back then, but it was well worth it. Her oldest daughter, who now lives in Oakland, is heavily involved in their best beginnings program and is involved in Dolly Parton's...
Reading library?
Reading library. And, you know, it's an amazing thing if you get youngsters involved at an early age. I mean, I can't tell you what an Anchorage legislator or a Rail Belt legislator is going to do, somebody from Fairbanks. I can't control them. Remember, there are three of us here, we're only three of 60. There are 57 other ideas out there, and, you know, but I hate to see early childhood education held hostage, and it happens every year, and I think that's absolutely wrong.
And I agree. So, one of the things that I've always said and I support as well is the education really is the mortgage that we are paying for our state on our future. So, any support that we can put into early childhood education, of all of the studies that we have, we know that early childhood education has the highest payback as far as our society. As Joy mentioned, we are in the middle of a tug-of-war, so we've got education that is held out in the middle, people saying that we fundamentally need to change the way we do education. But I think my father was on the school board in Fairbanks, and so, dinner table conversation, I guess I don't know where I picked some of this stuff up, but it's probably something there, but I do recall discussions about having to completely change the way we taught math back in the '70s. And then everybody started talking about the new math, and did the new math get us any further than the regular math? And so, there is no shortage of ideas for how to make education work better, but we do know the system we have works. And I, for one, am not willing to throw our existing system out for something that we don't know if it's going to work or not. So, I want us as a state to continue to put support into early childhood education, into our K-12 program, into the University of Alaska system, to make sure Alaskans have the ability to get the education that they need so that they can take our places, your places, as leaders, members of our society in the future, and that we're not, as we were in the '70s through a big economic boom, importing a lot of people to Alaska, and some of you may actually have been imported and stayed, but, and those are the people that we really like to have. What we didn't like back then, and what I think is a challenge now, we don't want to get into a situation where we have a brain drain so that we have people coming up here working and then going someplace else, which basically turns us into a territory. So, education is one of the most important things we can do as a state government for our state, and as Dennis said, as Justin feels, we all think education is vitally important for the future of our state, and so we'll keep fighting for it.
Thanks, Dennis. Sam? So, for a few years now, education has been flat-funded in Alaska. That was our big fight last year, to see if we could maintain flat funding, and if any of you have worked in a school or around education, you know that with costs and inflation, flat funding amounts to a 1% to 2% cut. I was working at Floyd Riden Middle School last year. It's a great school. I really love my coworkers, I love the chance to work with my students, and I saw the pressure, the financial pressure on the institution. Our classes are more crowded, our teachers are having to put in longer hours, and we're really getting squeezed. really getting squeezed. Now, the Senate proposed, compared with flat funding, a 5% cut to education. That would have meant 22 teachers in Juno out of a job. It would have meant three support staff, like me, I was a para educator, out of a job. It would have meant a lot of kids without the time to connect with their teachers. And schools are such a vital part of not just people's education, not just building their skills, but their social support network. An awful lot of the abuse which is reported in this state is reported through a teacher. And so when we allow education to be cut 1% to 2% year after year, it is going to directly hurt our next generation, innocent people. I want to commend Joy really quickly for the Best Starts Juno program, which she's been working really hard to get off the ground. It'd be a pre-K program for people in Juno, for little people in Juno. And as Sam and Dennis alluded to, an investment in pre-K can pay an enormous dividend. It's about 13% per year return on investment, once you factor in long-term corrections costs, once you factor in intervention costs. 13% a year is better than we see on most any other investment we make. So I encourage people at every level to talk with their assembly people, to talk with their representatives and their senators, and really make it clear to us that education is an issue that you'll be voting on. I know that there are a lot of very strong education supporters in the room, and I'm always heartened by that. We can have the next person up.
Yeah, I'm here to ask about the ferry system and what you guys plan on doing to help bring it back up to where it belongs. The system is crucial to Southeast Alaska and to stores, because a lot of the stores have their stuff shipped up from Seattle on these ferries. And if we go and take all the bridges away that go into Anchorage, they'll understand where we are at. Because all them bridges have been fixed over the years where they're double-wide, four or five lanes of cars can drive through. They're fixing those up because they need them. Well, we also need our ferry system. A lot of the villages will disappear if they don't have any way to bring stuff in. They're all going to have to move out. Maybe that's what people want us, have the people move out of villages and we'll move in and take it over. But it's crucial to Southeast Alaska. We don't have a lot, and what we have, we need to keep. This ferry system has been in place since I've been born, and it's starting to go away now. You look at the ferry system like you look at the indigenous language. It's disappearing because people didn't want you to speak it. Well, our ferry system is disappearing because some people don't want it, because if there's other avenues, somebody's going to get rich off of the ferries going away. We need to fight to keep this system in place. Yes, we can build smaller roads and build bridges like they do in Anchorage, but we have so many islands and the wind is so bad in the wintertime. How are these villages going to survive if they don't have food coming in? The food already in the little villages are like three, four times more than what we pay for in Juno. We need to look at how are people going to survive, even here in Juno? If the ferry's shut down, we have to start looking at barges or having people drive a long ways from Seattle to Haynes and barge from there. But it's still going to, the food's going to spoil. We buy food here at Costco. It's there a couple days and then it starts getting moldy. So we need to have something in place so that we can survive no matter where we are in Southeast. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. I don't like to brag, but my dad created the Alaska Marine Highway System. As soon as Alaska became a state, I was proud that my mother christened the first and second ferries and the fourth and fifth. But, and they're getting rid of one of them, but it's a sad day when you talk to, and I'm being honest, you talk to somebody on the Anchorage hillside or someone in the Matsui borough, they don't have a clue what the Alaska Marine Highway System does. They're more concerned about a $360 million rebuild on the new Seward Highway to get them to Girdwood faster and to reduce the accident rate. Well, that's fine. I'm all for reducing the accident rate, but don't forget the rest of the state. Coastal Alaska depends on the Alaska Marine Highway System. What they don't understand is we're the same, except our highways on water. They come to us and say, "Well, you know, we're paying all this money out and, you know, we're tired of subsidizing the Alaska Marine Highway System." How much do we subsidize the new Seward Highway or the Glen Highway? A lot, in federal funds. We pay a toll on the Alaska Marine Highway System. It's a revenue generator. Of course, it doesn't make revenue. It's a highway. It just happens to be a marine highway. And it really concerns me when some of these folks from, well, I'm not going to mention names, from other areas of the state, say, "Well, you know, we're tired of subsidizing you." Well, I'm tired of subsidizing the new Seward Highway and the guy on the Glen on the Parks Highway. You know, we all deserve highways, and coastal Alaska deserves their highways too. You know, we used to forward fund the Alaska Marine Highway System, and I applaud Sam for trying to get legislation introduced to continue and require that we forward fund the Alaska Marine Highway System. We shouldn't have to go through this year after year after year. You know, we have to have some buy-in and some solidarity on what these communities are going to be able to do. It not only affects Southeast Alaska, it affects coastal Alaska, I mean, all of coastal Alaska, Kodiak. Look what happened to the Testamina, the problems we have with the testing. It's rusty. We need a new ship to use cross-gulf. And we keep digging around and lost some money. You know, we just can't continue to do it like we're doing it.
Dennis, and I do agree. So Dennis did mention we are working with the governor, Lieutenant Governor, to try and make the Marine Highway System more sustainable. So thanks for the question, Ed. We are looking at trying to enshrine forward funding. And one of the big benefits of forward funding would be that the Marine Highway System, when our budget is passed July 1st, then would not have to adjust the schedule for that fiscal year. And that if we do have a change in the budget, they would have a full cycle to be able to change how they do the schedules. The other thing that we're working on is if we put together through this process right now that's happening with Southeast Conference and the governor, we've got a kind of a new management plan. Part of that new management plan talks about establishing a Marine Highway Corporation that has responsibility for the assets of the Marine Highway System. The other thing we get with that, though, is the ability to have a board of directors that provides clear direction to the state of Alaska moving forward with the Marine Highway System. It's critical. It is our highway system in Southeast Alaska, in coastal Alaska, going out to the Aleutian chain. It's important, vital for smaller communities in Alaska to be able to be connected in that way. And so that's something that all of us work strongly for. We do have allies in other parts of the state, but there are people in some of the larger communities that don't see the benefit of the Marine Highway System. One of the comparisons that I have made in the past is you might, on some of the routes that might not be traveled as much, think about the Marine Highway System as a road, but think about the Denali Highway right now that connects Paxton and Cantwell. That road is, they close it in the wintertime, but it's still maintained in the summertime. It only connects two communities. It is a vital link for tourism access for a lot of people that want to go through and driving the gravel road to see Denali Park in that way on the other side of the highway from Denali. So there are challenges in maintaining the Marine Highway System as well as the roads that I think we need to work really strongly on. One of the things we can do when we put together a corporation, make sure they have an asset management plan or the ability to manage their assets so that we can make sure we're operating as efficiently as possible, as inexpensively as possible, and moving people as efficiently as possible. And so I do think we can do that. I think we can do that within a corporation kind of framework.
So my grandfather worked on the Alaska Marine Highway as an engineer. My father worked on the Alaska Marine Highway. My sister's husband works on the Alaska Marine Highway. So please take this as my conflict of interest declaration. I'm entirely committed to keeping the Marine Highway healthy into the future. I'm hoping to meet with the leadership of the three Marine Highway Unions and with the, some of the harbor managers to try to talk about what we can do to put pressure on the Senate to fast-track a supplemental budget to keep the Marine Highway running at capacity. Hopefully, we'll be able to move into forward funding because we do need to protect our neighbors. We need to be a capital which is concerned about communities from Dutch Harbor to Ketchikan to Utqiagavik. It's all our community, and we can, if we act in a concerted way, if we talk to our friends around the state, we really can protect the things that are important to us far into the future. I had one of my fellow legislators, a friend from Anchorage, said that if the Senate wanted to play games about this, and that's the Senate majority, not the good senators, if they wanted to play games, then she would be willing to propose closing a lane of a highway leading into Anchorage. And that's a way, that's a way to bring it home to people, to remind people that it is a vital, life-saving service which is provided in Southeast Alaska, the same way that highways are all across the nation. Oh, sir.
Hi, my name's Jeff, and I appreciate you guys having this town hall. Quick question for Representative Kito. It's my understanding that SB 54 has been assigned three committees. Can we realistically, sir, expect any movement on that during a fourth special session?
So it does have three committee referrals, State Affairs, Judiciary, Finance. So the situation we had was, State Affairs has already had two committee hearings. We will see likely that we will reduce it because everyone's going to be focused on that bill. We'll all be paying attention. We will still have a committee process for the bill, but we didn't actually receive it until two weeks before the end of the regular session. 30 days for a regular session should be adequate to be able to address that. I'm hoping that it doesn't distract us from also addressing the revenue piece. It should be plenty of time, and it will not have the same committee referrals as it did when we left the bill, I guess. The last hearing of the bill was in May. So I do anticipate that we will have the ability to address that one. The only thing that could be a challenge in dealing with Senate Bill 54 is going to be whether or not there are concerns from other legislators that we need to start considering or that we need to consider a withdrawal of Senate Bill 91 in total. We have heard that resolutions are on their way from Anchorage that actually recommend against that and support some specific areas of fixing Senate Bill 91, which are being addressed in Senate Bill 54. So when everybody gets here, we'll be able to sit down and have that conversation. I don't see that as being a problem. What I do see as being a problem is whether or not we will have enough time to deal with Senate Bill 54 as well as revenue, which are both very emotional issues for people. So Senate Bill 54, yes. Whether we can get to revenue on top of that is going to be a bit of a challenge.
Thank you. I have another question, and it has to do with retirement system. I represent, I'm here on behalf of Juno Police Department Employees Association, and I can tell you that the city police force is understaffed. We have a number of vacancies, and it's hard to recruit and retain folks for a myriad of reasons, not to exclude the weather here in Juno. But one of the things that would be very helpful is if the retirement system got returned to some sort of defined benefit, and I just wanted to know what your guys' thoughts were on that.
So Senator Green and I both have bills in that are, attempt to put a hybrid, well, actually a combined system in place where an employee could choose defined benefit or defined contribution. We have some challenges in the Senate for being able to have that bill actually moved through. But one of the things that we need to have discussions about is with a defined contribution plan, 100% of the risk is being taken by the employee. With a defined benefit plan, 100% of the risk is being carried by the employer for success of the investments. There are other states that actually have hybrid plans that have the employer and employee sharing risk, and that is something that has the potential maybe more so than allowing a choice between defined benefit and defined contribution, although I think the net result would essentially be the same as far as our fiscal situation. But it is a discussion that's taking place. There is a lot of opposition within portions of the legislature for not returning to a defined benefit, but we're hoping we can find someplace where we could actually get to the point where we can utilize our retirement system as a recruitment and retention tool as well, because we're seeing what you're describing in many other parts of state employment and local government employment as well.
Yeah. Just under Sam. I've had a piece of legislation now in the hopper for two terms. And to be very honest with you, it's had very little support from the administration. You can't have, you know, do anything like that without some sort of support from the administration. Now, chemistry's just changed. Hopefully, we'll get a better eye. Our actuaries have actually proven that state employees and public employees can save money. I mean, the state can save money. Public employees will be better protected. But the state, we've shown through actuaries that the state can actually save money, but they think it's a risk. I don't think it's a risk at all. I think when we went back, remember, it used to be defined benefits.
I'm tier two.
I'm tier one, so I don't want to talk about it. But, you know, it used to be, now you got me off track, now I'm talking about tiers. It just really upsets me that when we went from defined benefit to defined contribution only, that so many people, it's our citizens for crying out loud, the bulk of the people in this community, like or not, are public employees. Every time the budget's cut, who really suffers? We do. We, yeah, we do. I mean, the people in this community. Maybe your neighbor has lost a job, has to sell their house, or turns the key over to the bank. Remember that during mid-'80s? It wasn't fun at all. I mean, I have very good friends that turned their keys into the bank, and that wasn't fun at all. I don't want that to happen anymore. I want us, Juno... I want us, Juneau, and my district to be able to live in peace and not worry about a retirement income, you know? But I think the choice between defined contributions and defined benefits is a good way to go. Because if you want to stay here, raise a family, pay taxes, and retire, defined benefits is the way to go. Say you have a spouse that's in the military, Coast Guard, or even in the Forest Service, and you know you're going to get transferred in two years. Well, defined contributions is the way to go. You can take the money and run and do what you ever want to do in Arizona, wherever the heck you're going. But if you want to make this state greater, defined benefits is the way to go.
I think we're all in agreement on this point. I actually had one of your officers talk to me downtown and tell me, if Alaska doesn't have a defined benefits option, I will not retire from the state of Alaska. And when it costs $190,000 to stand up a trooper or a police officer for their first year, that is a terrible, terrible waste. We're giving people, getting people vested, getting tier fours like me, five years in, and then more often than not, people are pulling up stakes. Do you know how much it costs to recruit a new teacher? It's about $25,000. And then in your lost productivity, in your lost expertise, that's probably another $25,000. So there's a huge hidden cost that only having a defined contributions option is imposing upon our, on our community, on Alaskans. And I, I could not be more adamant in wanting to have a quality retirement benefit system that incentivizes people to stay here, to keep their expertise here, to keep their families here, and ultimately to keep their retirement income here. This is, this should be a good state to work in, and until we address the defined benefit, until we have a defined benefits program for new employees, I don't think we're going to get there. Like I said, I'm tier four. I would, tomorrow, if they gave me an option to shift all of my money over into a defined benefits program, I would do it because I'm planning on being here for the long term. And a defined benefits program helps people. I've got one friend, another teacher actually, at Thunder Mountain. He could move to New York State next year, get a $15,000 wage and have a defined benefit, $15,000 wage increment, $15,000 raise, and have a defined benefits program. Juneau's a great place to live. It's a beautiful community. But until we make it a decent place to work and to retire, we're going to be losing a lot of money and a lot of expertise through turnover. So thank you very much. And if we can work together to put pressure on the people we need to pressure in the Senate majority, I would love to do that, to try to get a bill through that would be good for public safety, education, and all of our communities.
I think that's probably very possible. Thank you.
I want to apologize if I get worked up. So right, right now, just want to apologize if that happens. My name is Janice Hodge. I, there's three things I want to talk about. First of all, there is, we have a drug problem in Juneau, and it is causing a lot of the burglaries that are happening. So there's definitely a correlation there. We don't have adequate rehab facilities here in Juneau. If somebody wants to get rehabilitated from the drug addiction, really, they have to go to Anchorage. So they have to go to Anchorage, and then they have to establish residency in Anchorage to go through a year-long treatment, which then they have a good chance of staying off the drugs. But in Juneau, we only have, you know, this, the Rainforest Recovery, and I think it's just a 30-day program. Doesn't help our, our youth. You know, and I thought about this the other day. When I was in, when I was a young person, it was like, you know, my friends would, we'd all go out and have a drink and, hey, let's get drunk. And it was over the next day, but anymore, young people are like, hey, let's go get high, but oh, by the way, you're going to become addicted. So I think if you can help somehow with getting a treatment facility that's longer term here in Juneau, that's really going to help our community. That's the first thing I wanted to talk about. The second thing I wanted to talk about is the Klinkit language, no, the Klinkit Culture, Language, and Literacy Program. So my husband and I became foster parents, and we enrolled our little guy at Harborview just so that he could attend the Klinkit Culture, Language, and Literacy Program, and it's full. There's no other school that offers that, and I would really like, and maybe this is, maybe I should be in front of the school board, but I think, I think it should be offered in all the schools, quite frankly. I mean, at the university, the language is offered. Why not offer, offer the, our young children the opportunity to learn their culture in every school, not just Harborview? And not hope that when they have this lottery that your child's name's going to be pulled? So that's the second thing I wanted to talk about. The third thing that I want to talk about that has me the most upset is that our legislature cannot seem to pass a budget. That has me just, it's so infuriating because the legislature, you're elected to pass a budget, and you can't do it. It's just infuriating. And I don't want, you know, you talk to somebody, Senate staffers, and they point their fingers at the House. You talk to the House staffers, they point their fingers at the Senate. It's ridiculous. I mean, it just has me so upset. You know, thank you to Governor Walker, who took a stand. He probably won't get re-elected, but he took a stand, cut the PFD, you know? And I would have liked to have kept my PFD at the higher level, but I mean, I can understand the logic of why he did it. And I think, you know, instituting an income tax or whatever, do something, compromise, but do something, please. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Janice. And three questions, important questions. So the first one is rehab beds, and that is an issue statewide. And we actually have people coming into our community that can't get into treatment in time enough and end up relapsing or continuing their, their drug abuse. So one of the challenges we have with Senate Bill 91 is that when the bill fully takes effect, there is supposed to be adequate savings through reductions in use of our prison system to put that money into rehabilitation programs. The rehabilitation programs were put together partially with Senate Bill 91, but we are going to need a lot more directed funding, and there is a little bit of funding that's identified now for pilot projects, and Juneau has one. But we need to have enough savings dedicated out of savings from criminal justice reform that we can put into reducing recidivism and treating drug problems. And there are situations that I've heard, even here in Juneau, where we've got some of the large retailers, when they actually sit down and develop a relationship with some of the repeat offenders they've had, develop that relationship, those people don't come back and steal. And so we have situations where things can work. So hopefully, through criminal justice reform, we're going to be able to put more money back in, and that is one thing that we all know that we need is a larger number of rehabilitation beds. We also need not just the rehab beds, but we need to have the support for those individuals when they are out of jail, when they are out of rehab, and when they are trying to participate as full members of our state. They, they definitely need to have those support services. Second question, Klinkit Language Program, that actually was, stood up at Harborview as a grant, and I think the school district has adopted it, but there's not additional funding that, that we as a legislature could offer, but it is a popular program. It seems like we should be able to have the opportunity to grow it. I do think that that might be more of a school board discussion, and if there's a role for the legislature, I'd be happy to engage in that at some point, but I don't, at this point, see an immediate role for the legislature in that program. And then question three, the budget, that is the fundamental question we're dealing with, and I do think that the reason that we are here in this situation in our state and why it's taking so long is because we are fundamentally changing the way that we fund state government services. And we had very long sessions in the early eighties when we were dealing with establishing the permanent fund, trying to deal with all this additional oil revenue that came in. So, so we had a circumstance where legislature couldn't figure everything out, and it took a couple of different legislatures to try and get to our permanent fund with the dividend system put together. It's going to take us a little bit of an effort to try and get back to where we've got a more diversified source of revenue. And so I apologize for the length of time, but the fundamental difference between where the House is and where the Senate is, from the House, we believe that we can't reduce education, we can't reduce state services any more than we already have, and that we're going to need revenue to help make sure that we can provide those services. From the Senate's perspective, they're believing that we actually still need to cut the budget significantly before we can raise any revenue. And that fundamental difference is where we end up getting stuck. And so I agree, we need to sit down and figure out how to get past that, but that's been a challenge from the time that I've been in the legislature.
Yeah, thanks. Just to add to Sam, I agree with what he said, but to add to it, Janice, you have four Assembly members in this audience right now, four CBJ Assembly members that I can see, maybe there are five. I've only seen four. I'd talk to them as well. Seriously. It starts at the local level. I mean, we can help somewhat, but we can't provide funding to solve it all. And I want to go back to Senate Bill 54 for just a half a minute. The Senate passed Senate Bill 54, which was a fixed Senate Bill 91 on a vote of 19 to 1. And like Sam said, it didn't get to the House fast enough. They had two weeks. I thought it could have been done faster. It upset me that it got three committees of referral. But Senate Bill 54 would have fixed what I think were major items in Senate Bill 91, and done a lot to fix it, and then went, maybe we'll tackle it again, but we've got to do something. Senate Bill 91, believe it or not, is a lot of our fault. We put the cart before the horse. We passed this bill, and then we didn't fund. A lot of the things that are in Senate Bill 91 don't even take effect until January 2018. So we can't blame everything on the failure of Senate Bill 91, although I think Senate Bill 54 provides a great opportunity to do a lot of the fixes that we can do right away. Legislators are listening, at least us three are listening, and hopefully, we can come to a conclusion. As to the budget, Janice, I agree with you 100%. I'm the Senate Minority, one of five senators that are in another party, sorry, Bill. But I agree with what the House did in the backing of the governor. I mean, I agree with the approach they took on the budget, and I didn't like what Senate leadership did. Hopefully, we can come to a conclusion and, and solve this problem.
So I have in front of me the Adult Criminal Justice Program Benefit Cost Analysis. It came out just a couple of weeks ago. And one of the, one of the interventions which they, they tried out and which they measured was the, was a substance abutment, abuse treatment program, which had a, for every dollar invested, we save, or we're projected to save $23.80. And that is, that's a considerable return on investment. I wish that more of the investments we made as a state turned out such dividends. Investing in this sort of program, and I have the list right here, I'm happy to share it with anyone afterwards, or you can also find it online, that sort of investment cannot just reduce the costs to the state, to our criminal justice system, but it really can palpably reduce the costs to individual homeowners. Today, I went outside my apartment, I saw that the door of my shed was open. I went around the side of the house, I saw that the screen door there was open too. That there are costs, there are real costs to our failure to efficiently address substance abuse in our communities. We need to lean in on our investments in intervention programs. We need to invest more in education. Iceland invested in school activities, in allowing kids to have a, a credit towards music, towards martial arts, towards sports, and they saw an enormous reduction. They didn't just cut drinking in half amongst their students, they cut it a lot further than that. And that's the sort of investment, that's the sort of thing that we can do to increase our quality of life and to cut the social and economic costs of crime and addiction. So I warmly encourage everyone here to speak with your Assembly members, to speak with your representatives, to speak with people you know around the state, to encourage us to move in that direction. For the question of Klinkit language and culture, there are wonderful investments being made in our community right now. I hope that you're working with, with our school board, with our tribal organizations to, to help advance that. There is a piece of legislation go through the Education Committee earlier this year, I serve there, which would make it easier for Klinkit speakers to, to teach. As to the legislature passing, taking so damn long to pass a budget, I am so sorry. That was horrible. That was really a drain on the morale of our community. In Anchorage, their superintendent sent out 200 layoff notices to teachers because they hadn't received the assurance that, that they'd be funded. In Juneau, I'm very grateful to our superintendent, Superintendent Mark Miller, for not doing that, for, for betting on our ability to protect education funding, which I'm very happy to say that we did. But education funding was one of the hostages that the Senate was holding out there. Another one was our Pioneer Home. They proposed cutting 30% of the general fund commitment to the Pioneer Homes of Alaska, and that would have resulted in a closure of a veterans home in the interior and the Juneau Pioneer Home, and that is just unconscionable. And so, so it was difficult to come to a middle ground there, say, well, you know, just lay off half as many teachers, lay off, close half as many Pioneer Homes, cut half as many life-saving services, cut half as many troopers as they want. I really, we really need the people of Alaska to come forward and in one voice say, enough, find the solutions. I was speaking with Senator Machiki the other day. He was presenting at a community forum, and he said all of the, the things you'd expect him to say. We need to find a middle ground, we're looking for a compromise solution, and why don't, and I said, so when can we expect to see a middle ground revenue raising measure from you? When are you going to pass a middle ground kind of tax? And he said, you guys do it first. Because it takes courage to pass something which can be part of a responsible solution, I'm proud to say that the House majority- I'm proud to say that the House majority passed. We passed an income tax. That's unpopular with a lot of people, but it's a necessary part of the solution. We sent it over to the Senate, fully expecting them to reduce it, to put their own spin on it. Maybe it wouldn't fill the budget deficit, but they could make it as regressive as they wanted, they could take it down to 1%. Instead, they gave it a summary execution. And now they want us to run against the wall again and get beaten up again for trying to do the right and responsible thing so that they can point and laugh the way that they did with the governor when he cut the dividend in half. We need, I hope the next year, I expect the next year, we'll be able to pass a budget more quickly, because a lot of people are going to want to run home to their districts and explain why our ongoing $2 billion-plus deficit is not their fault, and why the $12 billion in savings that we've spent over the past few years is not their fault, and why the jobs which are lost every day in Alaska are not their fault. But we need to get past that, we need to get to the point where every Alaskan is calling up their representative, calling up their senator and saying, I'm willing to accept this, that, the other thing, I'm willing to accept cuts here, there, or there, I'm willing to do this or that, but if you don't do something quick, you won't have my vote, and I'll volunteer for your opponent.
I'll be very brief today, my name is Ed Colwell. I came tonight with two issues. One is the health and welfare of our ferry system. I know you're working hard on it, so I'll say no more about that, but it's a big concern for those of us living southeast. The second reason I'm here is SB 91. What that has done is put criminals on our streets that weren't there before. Paying attention, the Assembly should be paying attention to this. It affects the health and welfare of this community negatively, and this has just started. This is something new, but it was not a good thing to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed, and I do appreciate your comments. One of the things that we were faced with before Senate Bill 91 happened was Department of Corrections coming to us, showing us pictures that said, if we don't change what we're doing right now with criminal justice, by the time we hit 2020, we're going to need a new prison. That new prison will cost probably close to $40 million, and the one we just opened up, Spring Creek or Goose Creek in Wasilla, is costing us over $20 million a year to operate. So the whole SB 91 was an attempt to find efficiency so that we wouldn't have to build another prison. We're hoping to still be able to salvage SB 91 to get to the point where we can still not have to build a prison and get people the support that they need, and then that's the gap we have right now, is providing the adequate support to keep people from being returned criminals or frequent flyers at Lemon Creek here in our community. So the other thing I'd like to say, we've got a few more people that appear to have questions, we're going to try and wrap up around 6:00 or a little bit after. I will be able to stick around afterwards and have individual conversations if anybody has anything else, and I'm not sure about Senator Egan or Representative Parrish, but we will be available, and so we will, as we get through these questions, then probably wrap up fairly quickly, but I'll be around, so it's about 10 till 6:00 now, so, Don?
Yes, Don Haberger with the General Reentry Coalition, and we support SB 91. We think community reinvestment is a significant issue. You all spoke about it, some of my... All right, we'll try it again. From the beginning, Don Haberger with the General Reentry Coalition, and I know we have some differences on SB 91, however, the coalition supports SB 91. We think it was a significant step forward. There was a lot of work by the Criminal Justice Commission, evidence-based, and we don't think that there's been enough time yet for some of these things to be implemented. Senator Egan spoke of that. One of the things that I have looked at recently is just the crime rate here in Juneau, and for whatever reason, we see a spike or a rise from a low year around 2014, and it's continuing to rise. SB 91 wasn't even effective until July, I think it was July 1, 2016. So something else may be driving this is our point. It's not a result of SB 91. However, all that to say that we think that there may be some issues, actually, I should take that back, there may be some opportunity to fix some perceived issues, and SB 54 is out there to address those. However, don't give up the fight for SB 91, it's good legislation, and those are our comments this evening. Thank you.
My name is Carol Carlson. The question I have is this head tax, now is it Alaska residents only that are taxed?
So for the head tax, it's actually anybody who earns revenue in Alaska, so it would cover people that are not Alaska residents. At this point, it's at a level of 1.5%, and it caps at $147,000, like I said. The one thing that it doesn't have that the income tax that we passed last year had was a capital gains, which means individuals that are receiving primarily income through interest would not receive any, or not have any tax burden at all, so it's really only those people that are employed at a 1099 W-2 wage situation.
Because there's so many people that come up here and earn a living in Alaska, and they should be paying their fair share, I think, so...
And we have seen statistics that show about 17% of our statewide workforce is living someplace other than Alaska, so...
Great, wonderful, thank you.
Well, thanks, but you have my walker, no. Just to answer Carol real quick, actually, we had a report from JDC that it's 19% in my district of their non-resident. Now, maybe employee that lives in Haynes works in Juneau, but they count that as non-resident. You know, and I had to go through this thing again, you know, when I was a kid, I was 12 years old, I had to get a waiver by the Department of Labor to work as a data entry clerk at a bank in Seattle. I volunteered at the Alaska State Fair in Seattle, the World's Fair. I had to get a waiver for that. I guilnetted on Bristol Bay for three years. I paid income tax, and the bunkmate of mine from Monterey, California, paid income tax as well. I worked on the North Slope for two tries, or two try, two terms, almost a year, at Happy Valley. Guess what? The guy from Tulsa, Oklahoma, my bunkmate, paid income tax as well. I think it's criminal that we bring these people up here, live off the state of Alaska, and as citizens, the only sales tax or income tax they pay is when they buy a drink at the airport lounge, waiting for the plane to leave. To me, that's absolutely wrong. I think if we're going to have some sort of a modest head tax, I'd like to call it an income tax, that's really what it is, everybody pays. You know, I had two successful businesses here in Juneau. I paid income tax on all of them until 1982, when all of a sudden, we didn't have to anymore, but it didn't hurt me, because you cope. And guess what? I paid for services, and we made progress in Juneau. I want to continue to make progress in all of southeast Alaska. I think it's vitally important that we step up to the plate, like or not, and try something.
Thank you. So first, because it's most fresh in my mind, on the question of residents versus non-resident contribution, I've got, in the short-run economic impacts of Alaska's fiscal options, they break it out for you, they'll let you know which proportion is going to be going, coming from which segment of the population. And under an income tax scenario, about 10%, depending on how you structure it, would come from non-residents, and about 7% would come from the federal government through people writing it off on their taxes. And so however we structure it, it's going to be targeted to protect Alaskan workers, protect Alaskan families, at least if we at the table have our way. To touch on SB 91, I think that if we make the investments that we should in recidivism reduction, we can see up to a 32% reduction in recidivism, 32% less re-offense, and that program was for sex offenders. And God, I don't want them re-offending. That's a good place for us to be putting our money, putting our collective will. And so if we want to talk about the increase in crime, it should be in a broader context. We have an opioid epidemic here, same as throughout the nation. We have increased unemployment here, same as throughout the nation. We have been squeezing our public safety, and we haven't been investing in the retirement programs that would see them sticking around. We need to address all of those problems. SB 91 itself had some problems, that's why we have SB 54 to fix them, and I think that that will be of great use to us.
Do you have to talk now?
Yes, please.
Thank you, I'm going to be quick. I'm Judy Crandall, and I just wanted to say several things about Governor Walker's head tax proposed. Number one, it only taxes working people instead of all income. Was it Dennis who said it should, you know, include capital gains? I agree. It should not exclude retirement income, and that's basically all my income, however. I don't think we should be excluded. And number three, I don't think there should be a cap on it. That's the same problem we have with Social Security. You put a cap on what you have to pay, it gets more and more regressive every year. So it should be more like an income tax, it should be graduated, you know, but those three things, that not all income is taxed, not retirement income is taxed, and that it's capped on the maximum, and it just, you know, I don't like it. I mean, it's something, and I suppose a quarter of a loaf is better than none, but that's my feeling about it.
A 2% flat tax with a $10,000 per person deduction would have a similar overall raise, except, or overall revenue, except you'd actually get money from the hill corps of the world. The third large, I'm sorry, the fourth largest oil or gas producer in Alaska pays no corporate income tax because it's an S corporation, and it just passes the money through as private income, and that's absurd.
Good evening, my name is Christina Love. I'm a formerly incarcerated person in long-term recovery, and I want to thank you guys so much for having this type of discussion with everyone present. It is, it's definitely a community matter, and I also want to thank you for passing the tax, because I believe that this is a community response, and this is the way that we can get the solutions. And talking about Senate Bill 91 and Senate Bill 54 is really, I know a lot of you have been on Facebook and social media, and it's a very controversial subject, and it's, of course, people want there to be some type of a community response to the increase in crimes and public safety, and I have, I've made it my mission to understand those. My experience as a survivor of sexual assault and domestic violence, of course, was to ask for higher penalties and longer sentences, but my experience in incarceration is that jails become a warehouse for people. I consider myself a disability rights activist, and you know, what we know is that the majority of people that are incarcerated have mental health issues, have substance use issues, are survivors of trauma, are survivors of domestic violence, and then we start to get into the intersectionality of colonialism and genocide on the Alaska Native population and the effects of that, and that's what we're experiencing now, is the effects of that, substance use, and mental illness are the side effects of what happened. And I honestly believe that this bill, in its totality, is an incredible evidence-based response that would provide support to people who desperately need it. Most people do not want to be in jail, but they never have the opportunity to get those supports and services, and I love that I get to be a voice for people who don't have a voice yet, and that my experience is that people not only recover and survive, but they can thrive. My story, including my daughter here, is evidence that people can recover when given the opportunity, and that each person that enters into that system needs the entire community, and that compassion and understanding and those wraparound services and those supports that we don't have yet. It's important that we have, my experience has been that the naysayers so far have been the loudest voice, so it's really important that we have people that stand up to say, when I was released from jail, I didn't have access to the same supports that my father, who's a convicted pedophile, did. And so in the very beginning, we were just advocating to have, as a survivor, I just wanted to have the same access to supports that he did as a convicted sex offender. And then from there, to look at my experience and what helped to get me to where I am, were those supports that are not available to a lot of people, but they are coming, and this will, it's fiscally responsible to people who think in numbers and for people who understand... Okay. We have to take our coat off. The human connection, you know, it's really important that we continually try to humanize each person's experience, you know, to the, I absolutely do not want people breaking into my car, I want my daughter to be safe, I want to be safe, I want to live in a safe neighborhood, and I have dedicated my life to finding those solutions, and I honestly believe that if SB 91 is supported in the way that it was truly envisioned, then it will come, but that requires all of us, that requires holding every piece accountable, that it is, that it, that it's the way that it was intended to be. And so I just want to thank you again for having this discussion and for allowing me to speak.
So we're going to go ahead and wrap up, but we will be around. Thank you, Christina, and thank you for bringing your daughter. And thank you all for coming, and actually, really glad to see the crowd, especially on a night like tonight, beautiful fall evening. And we do have comment cards, if you want to drop the comment cards at the table where you signed in, we will also be considering those comments, and thank you all for coming.